Wait, is on, oh damn. Alec, one more comment?
We have a call.
You're trying to get at it.
I'll try to get it in before.
How you doing, boss?
Good, good, good to see you.
You need this choice?
Yes, I do.
Yes.
Who's standing?
Him and I.
Okay, let's get started. We start Monday, March 16th of 2020. Comment Council Caucus, you need that receipt? Based for the record, council members Farrell, Conti, Igo, O'Brien, Flynn, Hoey, Doche, Anani, Love, and myself. Councilmember Johnson's also here. Council President Cory Ellis, and council staff, JR, Charlo, and Michelle Andre are also here. So jumping right into the agenda. Is it the 27th?
No, we approved that one.
Twenty... Twenty-sixth?
March 2nd.
More second.
Okay, on approval meetings for previous meeting, the March 2nd. Meeting minutes will be up for approval. Okay, moving on to local laws introduced. Is that everyone with me? Do you need this? Onto local laws introduced. Local law A of 2020 is Mr. Conti's.
So what this would do is just establish an omnibus provision for removal of board or commission members for cause. Where it's not explicitly stated in the sections that states it's a specific board for commission, etc. So the rule for cause by the appointee of the authority standard, but in some cases, like I came up with a pegboard last year. We were talking about that and there was no provision, but you could, but this does clarify that. This takes language that's already in the charter for removal of the cause members of the only board, the planning board. So it's just used the same language. It creates an omnibus provision where it's not explicitly stated in another part of the specific code, it's established in the commission board. This is the fall back that will apply. This provides.
So I thought the thing was saying that if we don't appoint, we don't have any ability to.
Remove?
And we should. So it would imply that.
Yeah.
No, we should.
We should.
If the person is served at the pleasure of the authority. For example, I gave them a service at our pleasure, we can remove them anytime we want without cause. In that case, if someone serves with.
Something I do is.
If someone serves on a board that has a fixed term and you want to remove that person prior to the end of their term because of issue that might lead to absence, ankle issues, or whatever, the appointee of the authority can remove that person for cause, but they also have to give that person the right to. So in some cases, we are the appointee of the authority in some cases.
Right, if we're not the appointee of the authority, then we have an alter of date taken action.
Correct. In which case, if we're not, it probably is the mayor. So this would apply to the mayor of Austin.
Right.
It depends on who you appoint.
I'm just noting for discussion purposes that maybe you would want in some cases.
So this does not expand to.
That gets into charter issues. You know, like they have a mayor who has a third rule of zoning, pointing for a cause. Because in that case, it's mainly.
It'll be going to committee, so we can have a deeper conversation. Law? Council operations?
That's where it's going? Operation.
Okay, onto local laws held. Down to number three, which is also Mr. Conti's local law C.
Yeah, that came out of the.
Council operations.
Law committee, that's Monday night.
It was yesterday.
Monday.
With recommendations that create diversity, just establishing a book class, appointing persons training program, administrative services.
Okay, be up for a vote. I know I wasn't able to make it to the law committee, but can I also make like a friendly amendment where the council could be included in this?
You can, I don't agree with it.
Okay.
Because administrative, we accept the policy, but the public administrative services has a responsibility for establishing the program parameters. When you say the council chooses.
No, just essentially, yeah, take some of that diversity training also. Like to be included.
We would.
Okay, that goes on.
We get an online.
Gotcha.
You put a go back and do it.
Alright, sounds good.
And check of all the boxes.
You guys actually completed, though.
I looked at this, I thought it was more comprehensive than the one that we had. Gotcha.
It is, there's different pieces that are.
Okay, rest of local laws are held, onto ordinances introduced.
Local law D, if that comes out of committee on Thursday, that might be.
Is it on, is that on?
I thought it was on the agenda, maybe it's not.
No, exceptionally not. Okay, so back to local law cell number four, local law D. You have that on?
Yeah.
Okay, Alfred, Councilmember Ballring has arrived. Okay, so back to local law cell, number four, local law D by Ms. Farrell, that's gonna be in finance on the 12th.
Yeah, tomorrow.
They'll be discussing it, so there's a possibility.
So if that comes out of committee.
That might be up for a vote.
It's right underneath.
It's at the bottom of that page, okay? Yeah, no, I went back. I went forward and I'm back.
It's in committee, so we'll see.
Oh, it won't go, it won't go on the floor for the 12th because.
It has to age.
Just regard that.
Sorry.
That's why I was like, wait.
There we go.
So once it passes out, then we'll start the aging process. So it'll be for April's meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto ordinances introduced, 43220, it's Ms. Love.
Yeah, but it has, but it has to age after in final form, so.
Is it gonna be amended in committee?
It might, I don't think it will be.
Yeah, we pass it.
Alright, so potentially. We'll see what happens. It's a surprise.
You gotta discuss it. Okay. Alright, onto ordinances introduced, Ms. Love, 43220. There's an ordinance, it's to allow to convey properties to Legal Aid Society at 69 Sherman Street. It's a lot, it's a vacant lot now, overgrown, and they want to use it for parking for 75, excuse me, for their office at 95 Central Avenue, correct?
Yes.
The intention is to develop and make parking for their office.
Right.
Okay. That's intro, they'll go to finance?
This guy go to finance.
Yeah. Okay, next one, 53220 is also Ms. Love. It's an ordinance for the sale, to approve the sale of 39, excuse me, of property along Van Tromm Street. It's adjacent to 39 Columbia Street. Any ideas for the folks at 39 Columbia Street to develop it? Right now, it's a lot.
And is that also an intro?
That's an intro, going to finance.
I just wanna interject here while the prices are provided. Appraisals apparently were done in the quest of people buying these properties. And when you look at the land value for land around these parcels, that the land value is assessed, you know, in assessment rules, of all parcels around it, is at a higher rate than that. And when it comes to 39 Columbia, I have a very significant question as to whether or not this appraisal, I mean, so some of the $25,000, we look at the entire appraisal, it's very, it looks like a lot of other properties that they're comparing it to are appraised quite a bit higher. So, just, I don't know.
Well, maybe for the weekend discussion in the committee.
39 Columbia is not.
Schedule it for a finance.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
No, I.
No, I appreciate that.
The assessment rule's broken down for land value also. Have some land, then whatever, even that's more.
Okay, let's keep going, we've got a lot to cover.
Or if you prorate it for the amount of.
And just real quick, also realize it's some land adjacent to 39, that's Van Tromm Street, so it's not actually this address. The 39 Columbia Street is the LLC trying to develop it.
Right. So, so I, I mean, if you look at the documents attached to it, it shows you the little parcel of land that they are then looking to take over that is next, that is next to the Columbia Street. Now, I also want to point out, you know, when it comes to Liberty Park, you know, parcels, you know, when something is very desirable to help complete the entire picture, you don't reduce the value of it because it's going to somebody.
So if we, I'm concerned about our time, so if we could continue the discussion. I appreciate that, thank you.
That's a good point, Judy, actually. Okay, rest of the ordinances are held with the exception of, we'll go down to seven, number seven, which is ordinance number 4311219. That's in finance, the meeting's March 12th, pending the outcome there, it'll be up for a vote. Okay? That was number seven, 4311219.
I don't know. Yeah, we'll have to look at that.
Down to number 10, it's Ms. Love's, ordinance number 2220. That will also be in the March 12th finance meeting. Pending the outcome of that meeting, it may be up for a vote. Number 10, which is ordinance number 2220. Okay, next, number 11, Mr. O'Brien's ordinance is to redo of 44. So, no, so we have to have the public hearing on the 16th, and also, did you want to say anything, a quick comment?
I will defer to our, to JR, because he's been.
I did a little research on this, on the points that the mayor did in their, in her veto, and one of the concerns that has been is the referral to the county planning board, the law. I looked into it and I contacted other people in similarly situated cities, like who are in corporation council or who do generally practice genuineist law. There was a mixed reaction as to if we should or should not do it to Albany County Planning, I mean, refer to the county planning board. But in terms of as a litigator myself, and with everybody else being a litigator, they do, they did advise, and I agree, that we should, as a precaution, refer to the Albany County Planning Board, get a determination, and if they say there's no need for us to do it, then we're covered. Because as a litigator, if I'm gonna, if I wanted to get something my way, I'm gonna throw everything at the wall and see what sticks, and that could be one that may or may not stick, so.
Questions? Oh, but we do not have to refer it back to the Albany City Planning Board.
No.
Based on the fact that they made a referral to us in 2018.
Right.
Yeah, and that's my question, since this is a major planning board and the recommendation of the city was. The planning board at that time, prior to making the recommendation to us, would have referred to county planning board.
You would think so.
There's no record of it, that they would refer.
If there was requirement, it would've been on the planning board at that time to have referred it.
And that's the issue that I've been fretting with, with going through records, I have no record of it, I've been looking through all our city clerks.
The planning board should have something in their records as having received a letter.
There's nothing there.
Then either the planning board's deficient, or there was a requirement that it has to be submitted.
Yeah. I mean, that's where I was going back and forth on the way the general municipal law reads, that it doesn't apply. I was leaning more towards that it doesn't apply, but just as a precaution, because there will be litigation on this.
So the county planning board has no record of it having been referred to them, even back to.
Not that I saw, no. And I went through all their agenda meeting minutes online.
I would love it if the administration would be so concerned and bad-awed about things complying with.
Yes.
So, we'll have.
I guess my question, this is already being pushed forward in a different body, you know, you know, if we take too long getting this approved to the Albany County Plan, and then getting approved to us, you know, who, what body's gonna have the authority at the end of the day? The zoning board, the planning board that's working on something right now, or us?
It's by Article 78, no?
Well, there's an Article 78, the citizens one against the zoning board, and I think it's super meritorious. Probably won't get a decision on that for a couple of months. By the same token, since the proposed site for the plasma sits within 500 feet of a state highway, Central Avenue, they have to go to the county planning board. So I suppose, and I will, I think their meeting is toward the end of March, they have a workshop coming up next week.
Yes.
But they have an actual meeting, and I think I will, in public comment, go and tell them that they may just want to table that one and wait on it.
Tell them the point. Mike, tell them the point.
Apply that you have a specific site location, which in this case, with what's before the board now.
Yes.
Has a specific site where the text amendment is not, and therefore the text.
It doesn't, but general municipal law 239M does say if you're amending a comprehensive plan, which is our USDO, it does require, it's required to.
I mean, the USDO is supposed to be consistent with a comprehensive plan, or it's not a comprehensive plan.
It's, either way, if it's a zoning text amendment, it's still, they're still subject to referral to the county planning board.
I don't think so.
That's where, that's where I, that's where I, that's where I was leaning, where it said that.
The planning board would have had to do that.
In section A, it talks about zoning text amendments in general, and then it goes into more specifics if any of the text affects 500 feet within county, state properties. And that's where I was leaning towards, because our thousand feet setback is pushing it away from any state or county property.
Okay, Mr. Ballring.
If we want to go to the county. What's the timeframe, you know, gets this laggy?
I don't think.
We would get a decision by mid-April.
Alright, right, so it's gonna push it back. So will you continue to work on that, and as far as trying to find out the issue with the county planning, instead of looking through records, maybe you could reach out to someone, or actually stop there and talk to one of the members and say, you know, did you handle this issue, this amendment? Just to get confirmation.
Was this forwarded rather than the council? Was this forwarded to the executive?
And we have a public hearing on Monday, before the meeting, also. Okay?
Then, JR, the secret thing, you're working on that.
Yep, it'll be done at the public hearing, that's fine.
And then, one of the things which concerned me was, there were some assertions in the veto message, namely, the biggest one that bothered me was they seemed to be saying that the planning director has to approve any action we take affecting the zoning code, which I disagree with.
And I disagree with it as well.
So, and I appreciate everything you're doing, my hunch is we would get another veto message with some of these bogus arguments.
And then we override.
Well, we can deal with that when that comes, so next.
So, we gotta move on now? Okay?
That authority for the planning, that was part of.
Resolutions introduced. Okay, Mr. Conti, number 23.
Okay, so 2332.
3220.
23 is the home message for permanent parking bill that has been introduced to the state legislature. Talking about, it does three things, it's a reminder, I'm not sure if you can see this again, but it does three things. One, you should make the system permanent, so we don't have to go back every few years. Two, it expands the radius within which we can establish a permit system from three quarters of a mile of the Empire State Plaza to one mile. That will help, in particular, like what's happening with Albany Med, and two, downtown campus, some of the issues in Washington Square and Conneal area, to be extended, if you want to do that, if that is mandatory, you think you make that kind of decision. It would also add 750 additional spots to what we could use, and that would actually be helpful on the shared public, and potentially, depends on the area, where they could possibly use some more in some other areas, so that would save us enough to play with. So, that's what it does, you know, it authorizes, it's an authorization, it's approved, any decisions come back to us, because we would have the many ordinances itself. Let's think it's passed on Monday, because there is a contact involved, and, you know, legislative session is a little bit compressed, and who knows if it's.
Okay, members are comfortable, it will be passed on Monday.
I want to ask, was there a conscious decision not to increase the number of parking spaces that are referenced as being within that mile radius? So it mentions that it's going to allocate X number of units out of non-accounts.
No, just ask that it pass.
Correct. I think the 9,000, this goes back a while, and I think when 9,000 number, because we were originally talking about it one mile, and I think that 9,000 number, which probably excluded, commercially zoned, it was done a long time ago, should probably update, but it was done at the time that we were talking about, for one mile. And so, we mentioned it was three quarter mile, we didn't change that. No. So it's just another thing that was thrown out there.
Okay, so that'll be a pass. Okay, next, under resolutions introduced, 243220R, Ms. Farrell. Will go to finance. Any questions? Okay, next, 253220R, resolution, the council recognizes transdemocratic possibility by Mr. Conti. We're all gonna be co-sponsors, correct?
Yes.
Co-sponsors? Okay, it'll be a pass.
24 is a pass.
24 is finance. Okay, onto resolutions held, down to number seven, by Mr. Anani, councilmembers Anani, Love, Robinson. Resolution 112120R, it'll be up for a vote, Mr. Anani, would you like to say something, or Ms. Love?
It just got to committee?
It did, it actually went to committee, it failed, it didn't come out with a positive recommendation, and then what we did was voted to do, pass it out with no recommendation. Alright, right, that was the result of.
So, my question is, is there a caucus?
Say it again?
Is there a caucus?
Yeah, I mean.
Of all members?
For the people who.
Answer that question, no, all members weren't, we had a meeting about this a couple of years ago. And then the next time I heard about it was coming to.
There's not a caucus, Richard, no.
There's no caucus.
No. No, it's not a caucus, until it passes. Something that's. Where you want us to. How did you recognize something that's non-existent? It says the resolution, a resolution is not legally binding, so passing this doesn't mean there has to be a caucus. Okay. It just means.
Well, that's what it says, it's recognized.
Yeah, it just, there's no caucus. So passing this resolution doesn't make it a caucus, because it's not legally binding.
You don't, you're not asking the council commission to establish a caucus, are you?
No, it's to recognize that we are gonna be.
But there is no.
Establish your caucus, you don't need a resolution, then if you want to do a resolution.
I believe that it's important that we send a message to the residents, and also for people to see that this body in March was looking to have a caucus within the city of Albany that addressed issues that are near and dear to majority-minority districts, and also individuals that identify as such.
Members that are create the caucus, and establish it, and how it operates, and buy in, and then once that's done, then you come to the council if you want it, recognition.
Well, I've spoken to individuals who are interested in being part of the caucus, and once it passes, we will take the necessary step. Mr. Ballring.
But you're asking the council to give permission, and I wouldn't, you don't want the council's permission, no member should want the council's permission to create a caucus, whether it's based on Black or Hispanic, or on other issues. Members have the right to form caucuses without the council's permission.
Yeah, right, okay, so.
I'm just trying to understand.
It's going up for. Thanks. Mr. Ballring.
I'm gonna ask the, I'm gonna ask the sponsors if they want to hold this for now, so we can have a meeting for those who would like to have a caucus. I would hate for this to be divisive.
It's not. Just 11 finish, please.
Rather than something that unites people. This is something that should bring us, especially the representatives who represent Black, Latino communities. It should be something that brings us together versus something that divides us. If we are going to form a caucus, I think we should bring those representatives together, we should talk about it, we should have structure, we should talk about what we want to do, what our action plans are, what our, what we want to fight for. I think something like this focus and fight for would be push right control. I mean, that's something that this focus could be out front for, but I think we need to have that discussion. I think we all need to be around the table and have this discussion. I would hate for this to be something that goes to the floor and fails, or goes through the floor and creates divisions among those that we're trying to unite. So I'm gonna ask the sponsors if they're willing to hold off on this for now, to allow us to have that meeting among those members, so that we can get organized, get on the same page, and when it comes to a full council meeting, it is new process versus something that becomes divisive, and something that creates a negative feeling versus a passive impact. That might be something.
Again, there are three sponsors, but I will say, I speak for myself, and it just reminds me of the equity agenda, right? This is a resolution that has been introduced about a year now. People, individuals had opportunities to put their input, to make their suggestions, to make their comments, and once it gets introduced where it's on the eve of going to the floor for a vote, now everyone has their two cents, they don't want to add into it. So I have no interest, I want it to be voted on on Monday. If you want to vote yes, you vote yes, if you vote no, you vote no. I'd just like to say, I'd like to say something, and then Mr. Johnson's after me, but it didn't, it hasn't been there for a year. It's only been since, what? This resolution was introduced eight months ago. Individuals who are interested. When was it, when was it introduced? This? It was introduced in February. Remember? We emceed it? Alright, gotcha.
I would like to get a chance to say something, because we've been operating as a body for almost three years, and it's been critical things that have happened in the city, and I stood up there alone, by myself, standing in front of issues, and we've, people had many opportunities to speak, and I think it's just kind of a smack in the face, like I said, when I was sitting in that chair over there, that we're gonna push something that when we sat down, and when everybody that was involved with that meeting, it was very clear that not everybody was in favor of this. And so, because three people.
I would say that one person was not in favor of it, but again.
Actually.
Listen, okay.
It was more than just me.
You have it for on Monday, I'm not interested in holding it.
Excuse me, when you get to speak, we sit there and listen, and every time somebody else goes to speak and you don't agree with it, you just feel like you can just move forward with stuff, but like.
Hold up, Alfredo asked the question. Alfredo asked the question. You said you answered and you said no. Okay, oh, gotcha.
What I have a problem is the spirit, is that this is about publicity, this is about, you know, recognition, and more than this about doing. this is about, you know, recognition, and more than this about doing what's right for every neighborhood, and like I said, you know, last night, my biggest disappointment in being connected to this body is that we never talk about things that are near and dear to the inner city. And when we do talk about it, you get up and you counteract anything that we said. And you don't, you know you don't want me to bring up the other comment, so like for you to be that strong to sit there and say that we had conversation when we didn't have a conversation. It's been a lot of beat back door conversations. And so for us to come to caucus and then find out about this...
You have a vote on Monday.
Okay, so Mr. Dun, Mr. Hoene, and that'll be it. Let's see, quick, quickly, please.
Yeah, real fast, Councilman Love, I wanted one word changed in the resolution, and Councilman Manny refused, he said that you weren't there, and Councilman Robinson wasn't there, and I thought it was a minor change, and that's why, but I did second the vote so we could vote on it, but I'm very upset.
So where was the minor change? Well, we're...
We're not gonna do this, yeah. So you said no, you wanted it to be voted on?
We talked at them.
I wanted it to be voted on Monday.
We're talking.
We will, we will. So, okay, that was number seven. Number eight, resolution 153120, again, finance...
Depending on the finance committee meeting.
Depending on the outcome of the finance meeting tomorrow. Okay, on, down to number 12, resolution 223120R, again, finances, it'll be in finances, based on that outcome.
So, number 12, also on comment.
Oh, yep. It is.
Yep.
And again, this will be here tomorrow, so...
Excellent. Excellent.
Okay, so that was, that was it for the agenda, so...
So, we wanted to do a quick update on the coronavirus, and the potential for Monday's meeting, but also any meeting possible. Both JR and Danielle have been looking into different things, if we needed to not be here and have a meeting remotely, of course, canceling meetings is an option.
They're researching it, they're looking into it right now.
And then I, before, so I'm going to quickly turn it over to them, but I, we've also been talking about public comment. I had several constituents that would like to come and comment, but they are immunosuppressed, so they have been recommended to not come in, and...
Send something in the line.
Yeah, so I said that they could email all the council members, but also having checked with Danielle, they can either email Danielle or Michelle, and Danielle can read the public comment, so it's officially in the record. Some, you know, having things officially in the record does matter to, to some people, so that's another possibility, and I don't know how people feel about it, but we might put something out to just let people know that, so that they don't feel like that they have to come to the meeting, if we do have a meeting Monday.
But the Health Department and the governor haven't put any orders out yet.
No, they have not. Nope, nope.
Nope.
But just, there's a lot of, I mean, we have elderly people that come, there's a lot of people that might come, so I don't know if you guys want to briefly...
Yeah, we're here, Mike.
Yeah, right.
Ran through a couple different scenarios as to what we would do if we had to have a hybrid meeting, to where some of us were physically able to come, but others may or may not be quarantined, or may, because they're immunosuppressed, choose not to attend a physical meeting where they could be exposed. I reached out to our IT department for webconferencing, because I believe NICOM says you can't do a telephone conference, but you can do a web conference, and you're supposed to notice where the other person is participating.
And also able to attend, but...
So if that's, if it's a web conference, does that mean we, does that mean we have to livestream it out to the public, or no?
No, because some of us are physically here, and the other ones show up on a screen. Because we subscribe to a service that's very similar to Zoom, and I don't, or WebEx, where you can turn your camera on, most members have their iPads, which has a camera, and they would call in or visit a website, and if there was audio and visual...
I guess my question is more legal, so, yes, we can do that, but if we're barring the public from coming in the building, does that mean the meeting took place just because we're on webcam, or does, or does that mean...
I don't think we're barring, we're not barring, this is, this is just an option. There's, a lot of people might not want to come, but might still want to have public comment, so that's the...
Then they can call in, or...
No.
They're gonna email us, and then we're going, okay. And at this point, it's just, they're researching and trying to figure out what this would end up looking like.
It's really just, it's a disaster, it's just in case something happens to council members.
Oh, council members.
Council members, and you can vote, because we have forum, forum issues, right? And there may be things that have financial impacts required.
What do we do if we're all set?
So there's...
Cancel meeting.
For how long?
But for how long? And we don't have to...
We all have iPads, right?
It's gonna have a contingency plan.
The FaceTime allows...
But for how long?
FaceTime may not necessarily be a stable post, so you want something like...
It's a state law.
It's built specifically for web conferences.
State law?
The charter in state law says we have to meet twice a month.
So, okay, I just, I just want to...
We can't.
Say that again, Jared.
No, state law says we do have to meet, you know, there's parameters that we have to meet twice a month. I mean, the Public Officers Law 103 does give exceptions in how you can conduct it. One of them is video teleconference.
That's what I'm talking about.
They did, the Committee on Open Governments just did issue an advisory opinion that, you know, per 103D, 103D, that when you do tele, video teleconferencing, that the public is allowed to participate where the member is, but the advisory opinion said that, you know, if somebody were to do an Article 78 and they couldn't attend where a member was participating, that a court would probably look in the light most favorable to, you know, health safety, you know, health safety.
That's what I'm talking about. If we do a meeting and people can't come, do we have to blast it out? That's what I'm, that's the question.
I'm worried about it.
Do we have to blast it out so people...
You have to give your location.
So, we gotta go, we got two presentations.
Yes, so that's...
The committee on open government was saying is, technically, you need to allow people to be in those locations where other members are.
Versus R.
So people can, and the whole purpose of that is to...
I thought that was in the email.
See the facial expression, Zan.
So, that's technically the requirement, and basically what they're saying is, if you violate the law, I mean, essentially, if we violate the law, if we prohibited people going to those locations, the reality is...
Like coming to your house.
Almost nobody would want, you know, to go to those locations, or whatever.
It'd be a public health concern, and one of the, one of the suggestions that they would, and talking with NICOM is that, you know, we would still have a council... Yeah, we're still open. So people can still attend, and that would still be how they can come in.
That doesn't get to whispering your...
That's exactly right. We would cancel the meeting.
But essentially, what they're saying is, it's okay to risk it, because the ads are that if you were jumped, you're poor.
And again, it's still, we're still, we're still working through this, this is a worst-case scenario.
And here's the other thing that we need to...
Is that public bodies inadvertently, or for reasonable reasons, violate the open meetings law all the time, and there are challenges, there are not challenges, there
are not legal challenges for the most part, and even when that happens, the court tends not to undo the action that was taken unless it was egregious on purpose, not justified or...
Do we know what the county's doing, the county law?
I, I'm...
What, what, can we, can we, I apologize, we can continue this discussion, but we have presentations, so...
There's more information, we were just getting...
Yeah, so that, just to give, since we have a meeting on Monday, we just wanted to kind of get those ideas out there. One other quick thing before we get to our presentations, our last meeting, we got down to just having a quorum. Fully understand people get sick, I mean, last year I was sick, my son went to college, I definitely missed a bunch of meetings. It will happen, it's understandable, but please make sure that you have a dedication to coming to meetings, because...
And staying at them.
And staying at them.
I don't think it's coming, I think it's staying.
Well, a combination, because it was a, it was a really tight vote, and a lot of, I mean, it, I think it was like a perfect storm of people not being there, but...
It was, people left during the meeting, so just gotta be mindful, and if you, if you do end up leaving, let us know that you're leaving.
Yeah, if it's something that you know that you have to leave early, again, that happens, please let us know, because if, we were nearly to a point where we couldn't vote on anything, so that's just, we have to make sure to be dedicated to coming to meetings.
I just want to clear, myself, I believe I said something to Danielle, or herself.
Oh, yeah, no, I wasn't talking.
My mom was close to the hospital.
Yeah, this is...
Yeah, that was, I was just saying that in general, I didn't even know.
Just putting this out there, just moving forward, it may be difficult for me to make some meetings because of what we're dealing with, as a family, so...
Absolutely, and, and the thing is, we don't want to change that, I mean, I would never, ever want somebody to change that. If you're not feeling well, if you have a family commitment, that's where you should be, but please make sure that it's those issues, that you're not just missing meetings.
I felt weird, the vote knows, and they're walking out, so I'm pretty sure.
No, we just want to make sure people are conscious of the quorum in the body, that's it.
Kelly, I said for, for committee meetings also, it's just as much an issue.
Yes.
It's harder to get a quorum sometimes.
Okay.
Joe, I'm gonna do that for the record.
So moving on to the presentations, school district, we're gonna have to have the school district come up first, because of time issue, time.
Can you call him?
Yeah, my son's playing the district strings.
Okay, all right.
Clear some seats, need some chairs.
Being almost seventy years old, make me realize.
I can actually get in the mail.
I bet you do.
Yeah.
You better know her.
Oh, you know, sometime.
She's gonna answer your question about open meetings. We actually have already been down that road and noticed. We just had something to...
Right, well, that's what it happens. That's true. I've done that Empire State Stem Cell Board, people are...
Can you all do this in twenty minutes?
People are...
We can probably do it in less than that.
Less, we're early in the stage.
So, good evening, everyone, it is so nice to be here again, we are so very happy to be able to share our information with you, it is that budget season time again, and so I'm Kawida Adams, and I'm the superintendent for the City School District of Albany, we have Ann Savage, our president of the school board, and I don't know how many of you have been able to meet Kimberly Roaring, she is our new deputy superintendent of business and finance. And so we will jump right in, because I promise, we can get done in less than twenty minutes. One of the things that you'll see this year, especially as always, we start with our vision, mission, and goals, and making sure that we align our finances with those things that we believe in as a foundation. And so when you look at the next slide, you're gonna see something that's different from last year, that we're sharing with you, our legislative priorities. And one of the key things that we wanted to share with you about our legislative priorities, I'll go through a few of the high points, but we have recently become members of the Big Five Conference, which also puts our priorities in alignment with some of the larger school districts, and so now, as we go to our legislators, they're seeing some of the common themes across school districts, and so now there's a little bit more oomph, if you will, to when we bring forward concerns about transportation and things like that, because they're seeing that there's a larger impact, not just with the Big Five, but also with three of the affiliates, and so that also bleeds over to other school districts as well. So we've joined the Conference of the Big Five, and, and so far, we've been really excited and pleased with being able to get our message out as well. And so, of course, we look at foundation aid funding, that we're funded at 75%, and we have our state aid funding at 45%, and while we're happy about that increase, we're still advocating for that equitable funding when it comes to foundation aid and our state aid funding. We look at the child safety zones, last year when we were here, we talked about transportation, and we looked at reducing that transportation zone from 1.5 miles down to one mile, and so we're still looking at that. One of the things that we're advocating for is a pilot program, where maybe, you know, you start with Albany, so that we can see how it works, and then if other districts, rural districts want to align with that and pattern after that, we're happy to lead the way with that, with that pilot program, so we've also put that out there with our legislators. As you know, we always talk about equitable funding for our pre-K, our youngest learners, looking at increasing that universal pre-K funding, so that we are comparable with other districts that started that program later. Just a little bit of background, because we are an early adopter for pre-K funding, we are funded at about $4,800. Districts that have come in later are in the upwards of 78 to almost $12,000 per student for that UPK funding, and so we're advocating that we get closer to close that gap with the funding for our students in our district.
And I was gonna add in there, which I think is obvious to most of you who've been paying attention to public education issues, the, the school districts that adopted pre-K early were districts like ours, right? The highest needs districts were the early adopters, and we are all at the lower funding, and as they add new seats, and the state is doing a wonderful job, actually, even trying to improve pre-K education statewide, but what they're doing is adding new seats to less needy districts without trying to catch us up financially, so it's literally less money per student for the older.
Have they provided any rationale justification for that?
There's not enough money.
There's also several different programs, so does Albany get all one funding?
So we get priority, which is PPK.
We still do, but they blended them all to one.
And we get EPK as well, but they moved that money into one pot.
But they did, they're still calculating it based on the time, the date of your original seat, so that they call it one line, right.
Tell me you joined the Big Five.
Yes.
Is the requiring thrown out?
So let's be clear what we joined, we joined the Conference of Big Five Schools, which is a, which is a separate lobbying entity, right? The Big Five is a specific definition of the five largest...
So you didn't get the Mountain Foundation?
No.
No, we did not, no, 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 no.
No, 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 but they, just like, just like the New York Conference of Mayors is an entity that you guys look to for help and support, the Big, Conference of Big Five Schools is an entity that was originally intended, intended to lobby and support the Big Five Schools only, but over the last couple of years, they have grown a very small bit, by three, we are their third and possibly last additional affiliate member, and the reason that they, they're growing so slowly is they're only accepting members that have similar demographics and similar fiscal stress to the Big Five Schools. They all have different fiscal structures, the more you know about how every school district in the state is funded, the more complicated it is, and the more different it is, but that's what it is, yeah.
Yeah, it's, the Big Five is Rochester, Buffalo, Syracuse, Yonkers, and New York City.
Go get the A and O, yeah.
Correct, and then the three affiliate members are Montver, Vernon, Utica, and...
They didn't talk to you.
Mount Vernon, what?
Mount Vernon, Utica, Utica, and Albany.
The other, one of our other legislative priorities is looking at some of the unintended consequences for raise the age. We support raise the age, absolutely, however, what we've noticed is that there is an additional need for social workers, school psychologists, being able to partner with mental health care providers for our students, looking at that counseling ratio, so that our counselors can really get to know students and try and work with them to see what are some of the supports that they need. And so these are some of the unintended consequences of raise the age, recognizing that our students that may be just as involved, they have needs that are greater than the schoolhouse, and so we need to have those wraparound services for our students, so that we can help them be successful. And so that was also a legislative priority, and then our last two, our English as a New Language and refugee students, we've seen a lot of success at our AIC school, and so we want to make sure that we are continuing those services, and as well as our community schools model, we've seen a lot of success by having those supports right in the schools. Mr. Johnson is at a community school, where we have a clinic, and we have those, that access to those wraparound services right there at the school. We've seen a lot of success with our students in that model, and so, we would like to advocate to add that model to other schools and filter it through the district. Currently, we serve eight schools with the community schools model.
And if I could just jump in, the more that we connect with the families, the more that we find out it's a need for funding, it's a need for a lot of things, because we're dealing with, you know, when you deal with the whole child, that includes dealing with the family, and, you know, we have to figure out how to empower, you know, parents that are struggling with their teenagers, because they're going to the school district, they're going to probation, they're going to the police, they're going anywhere, and it's really they're not getting any support. So, when you connect with the family, you know, we start out dealing with the elementary student, but you start finding out what's going on with their teenage brothers, or, you know, family members that are in the house with them. So, there's a tremendous need for support, because it's a lot of holes, it's a whole lot of holes.
So, the next portion of our presentation will look at specifically where we are in terms of our budget. It's early in the process, and we're happy to answer any questions, and we will have Ms. Roaring kind of walk you through that calendar, and then, look at what are some of the impacts on our budget.
We have begun our community budget meetings over the last couple of evenings, and we have one more next Monday, which will be at Hackett Middle School at 6:00 P.M. We have upcoming board meetings.
I'm sorry, let me interject. That meeting is not the actual budget meeting, it is the budget process, so it acquaints the community with, this is how we go about determining the budget. So, just so you know, there's some others that are coming up.
April 2nd is that target date for the superintendent's proposed budget that'll be shared out with the board and the community at that time. Our budget hearing will be on May 7th, and our vote will be May 19th. We just wanted to share a little bit of information about our reserve funds. The district has several designated or restricted reserve funds that we have held money aside for specific purposes and needs. Over the last couple of years, we have been able to access those reserve funds to offset some of the costs on the expense side and balance our budget. One of the things that was part of the May 2019 capital project vote was that we utilized our capital reserve to offset that local share. So, when you look at the next page, you'll see evidence of that, when you look at the balances to that capital reserve fund.
And so, I'm just going to chime in, I don't think you have it at a later slide. I know many of you follow the news carefully, as we all do, and saw that we were identified as susceptible to fiscal stress in the controllers' report. That is really underlying this, that is really the underlying foundational problem, is that we were using some of our reserves in order to prepare for our much-needed facilities projects. So, we know what's going on there. We were, we're in the very lowest category, which they call susceptible to fiscal stress. We're well aware of what we need to do to address that, and we are working every day to ensure that we're managing this year's budget, so that we will be building up our reserve again, and projecting our budget for next year in a very thoughtful way to ensure that we are, within a couple of years, address that. We did allocate, two years ago, about $8 million of that capital reserve to our capital reserve for the purpose, because we knew we had that middle school, the North Albany project, coming down the pike, so yes, absolutely.
So, like, just the capital reserve?
Is the project within?
So that, they're not using reserves from other?
Correct.
Only capital reserve is going to capital funds.
Yes, although we do attribute part of our unallocated fund balance to the capital reserve in preparation for that.
Yes.
Right, which, and Judy, yes, the budget, we are on budget with the Albany High Project. We know it's a very long project. The first phase, as you all know, we had monsoon season two summers ago, so we lost a little bit of time, and we did have some unanticipated consequences, but everything has been within the contingency so far, and so, we were moving through Phase Two rapidly. That's what you're seeing built right now, that's the new music orchestra band chorus and fine arts, that's the one that's right up close to the street. So, but, yes, we're in a very good place right now, we're optimistic that we'll come out the other side full of our own budget.
When we look at our revenue budget for projected for 2021 at this time, we are used to the governor's state aid numbers, which are a little bit different than we would have originally anticipated them being. There are 264.6 million at this time for revenue, which is $4.2 million more than this year, or a 1.64% increase on our revenue budget.
Kimberly, this slide includes the tax cap on the revenue side?
Yes.
So, just especially for Judy and Ginny, who I know are used to seeing these slides in this way, this assumes that we increase the levy by the tax cap, which is almost 2%. So, that's already built into this revenue assumption. So, what you're going to see next is in addition to the tax cap, if we were to not address it, which we, of course, will.
So, the levy increases a little bit over $1 million or 1.96%?
I'm sorry, you're looking at this, that slide? Oh, no, oh, the next.
I'm looking at both. This slide, Judy, this slide here, the governor's, the 2021 with Governor's State Aid proposal also includes property tax increase of 1.96%. Okay, which is our tax cap this year. On the revenue side.
Tax cap?
Supposed to get the state funding, you have to increase taxes?
No.
So, I don't understand. Right, so, there's, this is, this is what?
This is the adopted budget from last year.
That's what the governor has in the budget for?
This column right here is our rollover budget on the revenue side, including the governor's executive budget and a 1.96% tax increase, which would be our tax cap. That is the assumption that's been made. Yes, it's our adopted budget. Yep, because as you know, the governor's executive budget has a huge impact on our revenue side.
The next slide is actually just a summary of the tax gap, which we talked about briefly, and it is that 1.96%, that's our limit for a simple majority plus one vote. When we look at our current budget status, our current rollover budget for next year is estimated 274 million. As we shared, our revenue estimate at this time is 64.6, so we are a little over $9 million difference at this time, or gap.
So, with a 1.96% increase in taxes, you still have a $9 million?
Correct, now, this number is going to go down. We're meeting with you guys earlier than we have in the past. Last year, we came and met with you, I think, in January, and we didn't talk about budget at all, we only talked about communications. Then, we met with you in late April, I think, where we actually knew what the budget was going to be. So, you're in the middle of the process. This number is not going to be, I will stake my reputation on this one, this number, you will never see go in front of the voters. We would never, ever look to this. What's happening now is, we are figuring out behind the scenes what to do on the expense side, right? We are looking at teacher attrition, we are looking at staffing questions, we are looking at everything we can on the expense side, and we are also continuing with our legislative priorities on the revenue side. Every year, typically, what happens is the governor's executive budget is one amount, the actual adopted budget includes an additional amount. This number is prior to that, okay? So, this is, we're in the wrong, like, we should really not talk about that with you all until we're at the next stage, but because of the way the timing is, we're here in advance of that.
Why is the rollover budget $14 million higher?
There are a number of variables associated with the rollover budget. We've had some, we've had some tuition increases, we have some contractual increases, and some benefit increases we've had to account for in that budget, that were more significant than they have been in previous years.
Did you say employee benefits, or?
Yes.
So, we are keeping in the back of our mind, the big deficit on the government?
We fully aware of that.
Absolutely, it's not in the back of our minds.
It's in the front of our minds. We're fully aware, Joe, and we, you know, this year, we are not expecting to get a significant increase between the executive budget and the assembly budget. We would love to, and we still believe, right, we still believe that the state has a long way to go before they're at a point of equity with the way they distribute school resources, but we are also practical in what is, what we know is happening this year, and Corona is just making that worse, right? And so, we will be looking, this number will be coming down.
Did you have a question?
Just quickly, quick question, going back to the priorities, is the dual-language language program included within the English and second language?
Dual-language is a magnet program, so it's not E and L, it's separate, but it is a magnet program. So, you're talking about Delaware Community School, right? That is one of our community schools, but it's, the dual-language program is a magnet program.
But in terms of our legislative baskets around English as a New Language learners throughout the district, so there might be some plus there, but primarily, that would be in our alternative, our Albany International Center, which is the one up by the Y on South Pearl.
So, so this is a 5% increase, basically, for the rollover budget. I'd love to see a breakdown of where those big hits are.
Yep, we have that, we have more detail on that for you. It's primarily in staff, staffing, we're never going.
I'd like to see a slide or an email come into us with that detailed information.
As we highlighted, some of our budget variables are the state aid number that we hope to know in the next three weeks. Our health insurance, we are self-funded, so that is a variable that continues to move over the next few weeks, and we will finalize what we expect that number to be at the end of March, and hope we don't see much more volatility beyond that. Our tax cap, as we shared with you, was submitted by the statutory deadline of March 1st, and the levy is set when the board adopts the budget at ankle. Our next steps, we're going to continue to incorporate the new information that we receive as it becomes available. We're finalizing our priorities, we're refining all of our projections, reviewing our assumptions, and then, we are continuing to respond to questions and feedback as we receive them.
The other piece, just so that you understand how comprehensive this is and what's actually behind the scenes, so we have worked with our administrators to look at what their priorities are aligned with what's happening at their schools, and so, they have submitted budget requests as well as budget reductions, because they've been able to prioritize. That information has gone not just from the school level, but also departments, and so, they're all looking at what are some areas that, where we have to prioritize, what are those must-haves, and then, what are those things that we could even put off, maybe for another few months, or next year sometime? We've also investigated where grants may come into play. There are some things that are requested by schools that can actually be grant-funded, so we're looking at those particular options. Eileen Lefler is our grants director, and so, there are state grants, federal grants that we can look at, so we'll see some of those numbers change, and those things may not happen this second, but they may be able to push them out and say, we can do them, you know, next year. We're also looking at, Ann mentioned attrition, we have several retirements that are coming up, we're looking at where those retirements are, and what kind of staffing adjustments we may need to make. We are definitely not putting programs at the top of the list, so we're also making sure that we look at those programs that are funded and maintaining those fundings. So, there's a lot happening behind the scenes along the way to work down, so when you ask about what that looks like, we're in the process of working on that, and those, that information will absolutely be shared out.
But the rollover budget is, right now, a fixed item, where you've come up with those figures, and it's 5%, whatever your budget was last year, now with whatever inflation, salary raises, et cetera.
Correct, correct.
So, you have that, and so, you know, for me to understand what's going on with this budget, and being able to explain it to people, that's really critical.
Absolutely, and again, that number's going to change too, right? Because that's just the current budget, we are working, we are not going to adopt this budget, right? This is not the adoption budget.
But a rollover budget by definition is you're taking last year's cost?
Yes, I understand.
And you are, so I don't know why the rollover budget would.
No, I'm sorry, you said, Judy, you said, I need to be able to explain this to people, and I'm saying, we're not planning to come out with this budget as a budget that is going to be explained.
But as a foundation?
I understand.
For, for, because that's a big hit for you guys to then pare back. I assume you're not going to pare back to 0% tax increase, so that will help me understand where, what is driving a lot of the increase.
Yep, I understand.
So, we are asking that, in keeping everyone informed, we have several ways in which you can stay informed. Of course, we have our community meetings, we have our board meetings, but we also have our information on our website, Facebook, Twitter, and we are sending you all information via your emails, so that you can stay abreast of everything that's happening.
Everybody still getting those?
Yeah.
Are you getting them?
It is a lot, it is a lot. There's a lot going on in our district.
I know, I know.
So, we've updated our postcards, so we've brought you several of these. We can send you more if you would like, as you're out in the community, you can, you know, say, here's what's going on in the district, and then, stay abreast of that, and then, of course, everyone gets our newsletters. So, any additional questions?
It's not a question, but I just want to say, thank you all so much for all that you're doing for the school district. I'm glad to see also, as one of the priorities, support for English and New Language and Refugee Community. During the State of the City address, the mayor talked about the population in the city of Albany rising, and where we've seen most growth is because, is coming from the refugee community, and also, I'm telling my cousins from Africa to come to Albany too, but that's not here on there.
How many cousins you got? You got 2,000 cousins, it'll push us over?
They're all coming, they're all coming. So, I just want to thank you for that. Another thing too, that I want to bring up, with the Montessori school, it's a phenomenal school, it's one of my eyes, the pride, the pride and joy of the city of Albany as relates to school district. Have we thought about maybe having like a second Montessori school moving forward?
It's something that comes, that many, many conversations happen all the time about how we can extend the Montessori program. One of the things that's really nice, and we aren't having active conversations about moving schools, changing schools, relocating schools right now, we are, as I think everyone probably remembers from when we spoke to you last year, the next big decision we have to make, and I know I'm getting back to your question, I promise, is whether we need three, three middle schools or four middle schools, right? That's our very next big question, and we will be doing demographic study again in the next couple of months, so that we can make that final determination. Once we know that, we'll know where we sit on that side, and that will give us some flexibility or not, in terms of our billing space, and then, we can go on to have that next conversation about what else can we do about our schools, and what else do we want to do? What do we want to do about dual, what do we want to do about Montessori? One of the nice things that's happening, at the same time that that's happening, is that pedagogically, the whole world is becoming more Montessori. Education is becoming more Montessori, more about individual children, and letting them, and encouraging them to sort of figure out what they need to learn now, and working in small groups, and doing teachers as guides, as opposed to sort of the talking, talking in large groups. All of that, which is really influenced by Montessori, is happening district-wide, so I think it's a good question, we're not at a point to answer it, but I do think that you're going to see a lot of the themes of Montessori throughout the district, and really throughout education.
And the second thing is more so, you know, with the big elephant on the coronavirus, have we, as a school district, thought about just like moving forward if there was to be an incident or a case at the school?
Absolutely, so, we've been working over the past, probably since the beginning of this month, when information was coming out from the State Department, we put out information on our website, we've sent it to our parents, we've also put information out via S and N. Of course, we look at sanitization, we're looking at what's done local level within all of our schools. We are looking at a tiered system, should anything happen and things escalate, so I'll start at the lowest level and move to the highest. At the lowest level, if families have the option, you know, you can decide whether to send your child to school for safety reasons, whatever the case may be, and that's choice, and that's anything, that's, and so, we have our normal practices with regard to that, students would get their homework, et cetera, whatever the case may be. The next level is if there is a found case at a school, then, as you know, the governor has put in a 24-hour mandatory shutdown of the school for extensive cleaning and investigation of what has happened and where the people have been in contact, and then, we would move forward that way. And based on that determination, that would determine if the school will shut down for a longer period of time. The next level would be if it's one school, two or three schools, and then, the next level would be if it's district-wide, and then, the next level is district-wide and city-wide, because it's very different if the entire city shuts down, or if it's just the school district that shuts down. Operationally, we have the capacity and the ability to operate from home, to do remote, for example, our Business and Finance Department, so that we can still run payroll and things like that. They have the capability of doing that, we have tested that, and so, we're ready to go should anything happen there. The other pieces with regard to instructional materials, we are looking at a resource bank, and those things are being pulled together as we speak. Resource bank for materials for parents and for students, tiering it out with Regent Courses, AP, IB courses, then, you look at. AP, IB courses, then you look at the core courses of ELA and mathematics, what resources would be available, knowing that, for example, if the district shuts down for two weeks, we're not going to pick up instruction where it would have been after two weeks. We're going to have to go back and do some reteaching. We absolutely understand that and know that. So we're putting together those resources to make them available. We are considering the digital divide. Everyone may not be able to have access or anything like that. So we have workbooks, we have the textbooks and things like that that we would send home with students and we would work through that way, knowing that there will be a challenge with accountability. However, that's where, when students come back to school, that's where the reteaching would take place and we would be able to move forward from there. The other components that we are looking at, we are in contact with the State Department as well as with BOSI's because there are certain things contractually with our employees that we have to consider. And so there may be waivers with time and things like that that we have to work through. Those things, they'll have to come, you know, for example, it is, as part of the state, we cannot, the last day of school is the last day of Regents. So we don't necessarily determine that. So the state would have to give us a waiver if we needed to extend the school year or if we needed to start the school year earlier. So there are a lot of things behind the scenes that we'll have to take direction from the State Department with, and then we will have guidance coming out from the State Department with regard to that.
And the other piece you haven't mentioned, which I know we've talked about a lot, is they're also involved in pre-planning around food for students. You know, many, many of our students get two meals a day in school, so I know that our Director of Food Service has been in conversation already trying to think about how we would distribute food and how we could distribute food to children who would otherwise go hungry if they're not in school. So that is a really critical aspect of the planning that's happening.
We're working with the School Nutrition Association with regard to that.
Just because Anne's daughter's performing right now, so I.
I have actually seen her perform before, but I don't want to.
I miss so many of my kids' performances and I still do. So if we can.
I just want to ask one question about the coronavirus. You send textbooks home with kids and they are maybe the germ at home, then you have them bring those books back?
We're going to have to work all that out, Judy, as the time comes, right? This nuts, no, we're all in completely uncharted territory here.
So there's the accountability piece, but on the other hand, you may not want those books back.
We're aware.
Yes, yes, as I was saying, we are definitely involved in planning for that already. We're intrigued by that.
And then the staffing component, you know, will the staff come back to do it or will we work with our community partners? All of those details have to be worked out.
What will the city's role be? All of that will be.
Okay, Mr. Ballin, and any other budget questions?
Budget questions? Not a budget. I just want to thank Superintendent Adams and your staff publicly for participating and working with neighbors in my community, specifically with issues about dismissal from Albany High. Last night, Principal Albany High, you and other staff attended a meeting to discuss those specific issues and I appreciate that. The neighbors appreciated that, the residents appreciated that. Like I said, it was the first time in over 10 years that I've attended those meetings that we had, the principal from high school attended. So they were, really felt like it was a good step forward and I thank you for that and continue those efforts.
Thank you, and we're seeing improvement. That's the good thing. We're seeing improvement, so we're excited about that. Thank you so much, and thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Have a great evening.
Good evening, everybody. My name is. Well, we save the best for last.
That's right.
So my name is Rose Green from City of the Human Services Research. We're located at the University of Albany. We conduct studies of social issues and social programs and develop information systems for human service providers. A lot of the work we do at the center is for state agencies, we have some federal contracts, but what gives us the most joy and satisfaction are doing stud, local studies where we can really look at phenomenon in depth. And we have a really great story to tell you tonight, a little spoiler alert. I want to recognize the team here. I direct the center, but I work with an awesome group of people, Susan Dito, Felix And Sandra McInnes is going to tell you the results of our research on the Summer Youth Employment Program.
So I think you're all familiar with the Summer Youth Employment Program, is that correct? Just briefly, the goals of SAEP are to get our city youth prepared for work, help them attain some good skills and work habits, and of course, give them a source of income. So, next slide. In 2019, our center conducted an evaluation of the SAEP. And we basically looked at two different sources of data. The first was some data from the City School District that we used to analyze graduation rates of youth who were enrolled in the City School District. And specifically, we compared those youth who had participated in SAEP with those who had never participated in SAEP. Then we also did some, oh, back, some data collection last summer, surveying the youth who were actually participating in SAEP and the employers who had hired these youth to find out basically what their experiences of the program had been. Now, basically, the first question we had with the school district data was who participates in the Summer Youth Employment Program? Do the participants really look much different than the non-participants? And this was an important thing for us to find out because we wanted to, ideally, we wanted to see that the Summer Youth Employment Program had a pretty representative profile of youth participating, that these kids weren't already, you know, coming from more advantaged circumstances or higher achievers or whatever, but that they were pretty typical of City School District of Albany students. And we started out with about 13,000 kids who were enrolled in the school district at some point between 2008 and 2018. And we looked at their characteristics from school district records. And what we found was that there weren't a whole lot of huge differences. Most of the differences were statistically significant because we did have a very large sample. But if you look at the actual size of the differences, many characteristics were similar. Gender was pretty similar, GPA was pretty similar, enrollment in the special education program was pretty similar. One of the things we looked at was residents in a target neighborhood. And we kind of borrowed the target neighborhood concept from the Albany Promise Program, which I think most of you are probably also at least somewhat familiar with. And those neighborhoods were based on the zip codes that pretty much corresponded with Arbor Hill, the South End, and the West Hills neighborhoods. And those numbers are pretty similar between the kids who participated in SAEP versus those who did not. We did see some racial, ethnic differences. Kids who participated in the program were more likely to be African-American, less likely to be white, Hispanic, or Asian. We also saw some differences so far as economic disadvantage. And we're not really sure how good the quality of this data was. It was based on free reduced lunch and we think, in fact, we're pretty sure it's an underestimate for the school district. But we don't really have any reason to believe that it wasn't underestimated consistently between the two groups or presenting in any way. And it would appear that the kids who participated in SAEP were quite a bit more likely to be from an economically disadvantaged family. So we looked at the graduation rate between these two groups of kids and we found a surprisingly large difference. Eighty-three percent of the kids who had been in SAEP ended up graduating from high school compared to 66% of those who did not. I should mention that this is a somewhat more limited sample because of the 13,000 we started out with, many of them are still students in the district and many others have transferred out of the district. So this analysis was based on a sample of about 3,500 kids who had either graduated or essentially dropped out. And even though we already looked at the profile of characteristics of the participants, we wanted to do some more sophisticated statistical controls for those characteristics. And normally what we find in this kind of research is we find something that we believe is a, is a program effect and we start controlling for the characteristics of the participants and we find that the effect that we thought we had starts to get smaller. In this case, after controlling for demographics, GPA, other risk factors, we actually found that the difference between the SAEP kids and the other kids had gotten much larger when you held constant for those factors. We decided to take a look at how the SAEP program might have benefited kids differently depending on their racial, ethnic background. And we found that there were benefits to the program for kids in all four of the major racial, ethnic groups. But as you can see, the differences were somewhat larger, notably larger for the non-white The next thing we wanted to look at was how, how the program may have differentially benefited kids by their level of academic performance. And so we broke GPA in their most recent school year into basically five groups. You know, the lowest 20%, the next lowest, the middle, 20%, et cetera, et cetera. And as you can see, again, the SAEP kids graduated at at least somewhat of a higher rate in all of the GPA groups. But the rate, the, the difference between the two groups was much greater for those below the 40th percentile and especially for those in the lowest 20% of GPAs, which is really very striking. What we looked at next was just, you know, okay, you can participate in SAEP for, you know, as many years as you want up until age 19. And we wanted to see how the number of years that kids were participating in the program might have affected their graduation rate. And as you can see, as number of years in SAEP go up, graduation rates kind of go right up in lockstep. So this was really striking to us because basically we did everything we could do to make this association disappear. And we still can't rule out that there were some selection effects going on, that kids who might have just been intrinsically more motivated to better their circumstances were the same kids who enrolled in SAEP and, you know, coincidentally, the same kids who graduated at higher rates. We don't have the personal information on these kids that would allow us to rule that out. But we looked at basically everything that we could think of to look at. And what we ended up with was a pretty strong evidence that there is an effect here. Correlation is not causation. You know, you have to really look at the evidence and say, you know, does this look like it could be an effect? And in this case, it very, very much looks like it could be a causal, causal relationship. The second part of the evaluation we did focused on the experiences of the youth. We also did an employer survey. I'm not going to talk about that today because I think the youth experiences are more interesting. We wanted to learn about how they experienced the program, how it may have affected their attitudes about work in school, and how it may have changed their ideas about the kind of future they envisioned for themselves. We gave surveys out to over 1,000 participating youth. We surveyed them at their work site. We got 447 surveys back, so we were upwards of a 40% response rate. We found, one of the first things we found was that SAEP is an initial work experience for the vast majority of these participants. Ninety-four percent of kids reported that they were either getting their first work experience with SAEP or had gotten their first experience with SAEP in a previous year. Seventy-one percent said that their experience was a good fit with what they had been looking for. Roughly half of these kids were employed as camp counselors, 47% of the respondents. The remaining 53% were divided up into a wide, wide variety of jobs citywide. They were asked to indicate which of these skills related to their academic performance that they felt SAEP helped them with. As you can see, 42% of these kids said that the program had helped them with their problem solving and their critical thinking skills. Forty-two percent said the program had helped them with their time management skills. A third of them said it had helped them with following directions. An early quarter said it had helped them have higher academic expectations for themselves. One in 10 reported it helped them decide to stay in school. They were also asked, how did the SAEP help you prepare for future employment? And 58% of the kids said that it taught them to show up on time. Fifty-seven percent said it taught them how to work in teams. Fifty-three percent said it taught them communication skills. Forty-eight percent said it helped them learn to accept feedback. Now, I think this is really important because these are exactly the kind of soft skills that are in demand in the workplace. They're the kind of skills that will serve these kids no matter where they go in their future, that pretty much all employers want to see in valued workers. Seventy-five percent of the kids agreed or strongly disagreed that their experience in SAEP had made them think about different careers. Eighty-six percent reported that their experience had helped them prepare for a future job. And 91% agreed that they had gained skills that may be needed in a future job. When they were asked specifically about different statements about how this had affected their ideas about their future, 42% said that they have more confidence in whatever they do. There were also significant numbers that said that they were now interested in a different type of job, that they think that they can get a better job, and that they think that they can reach a higher level of education. The SAEP program includes a Friday enrichment component for most of the kids. I should note that camp counselors are generally not able to participate because they are doing their camp counseling on Friday afternoons when this takes place.
Excuse me, that's 40, 47% are camp counselors?
Yes, yeah.
So that affects all the numbers up here?
Yeah, yeah. No, all the numbers up to this point included the camp counselors, but the Friday enrichment numbers do not include them. So this is based on 53% of the students. And the Friday enrichment activities included a financial literacy workshop, a tour of U Albany, a Know Your Rights workshop, career exploration. And 67% of the kids agreed that they learned a lot from participating in Friday enrichment. 68% agreed that the program gave them knowledge or skills that would help them prepare for future work. Again, related to the findings that we had for graduation rates, it was youth living in the target neighborhoods that we found were more likely than the other kids to agree that they learned a lot from the Friday enrichment program and that the program gave them knowledge or skills that would help them prepare for future work. So this is consistent with what we were seeing, the kids that may have the most challenging circumstances or disadvantages seem to be the ones who are benefiting the most from this program. In terms of overall satisfaction, the numbers were incredibly high. Ninety-five, or 94% were satisfied with their work experience. 95% were satisfied with their participation in the program. Eighty-five percent wanted to participate in SAEP next summer. And for those who couldn't, it was mostly because they expected. And for those who couldn't, it was mostly because they expected to have a better job. That was almost two-thirds of those who did not think that they would participate again. Most of the remainder, they're expected to no longer be eligible for the program or not living in Albany or to be in school at that point. So, you know, only eight percent of the fifteen percent who did not expect to participate said that they didn't have a good experience. So this was a pretty compelling endorsement of the program, I think, from the youth who participated. What are the takeaways about this program? It seems to be associated with increased graduation rates. And that association is stronger for non-white students, stronger for those with GPAs in the lower forty percent. And I did present a slide on this, but this was also stronger for kids in those target neighborhoods of Arbor Hill, West Hills, and South End. PSYEP provides an avenue into the workforce for many Albany youth. This is the first job they've had. And they report positive impacts of the program on their academic skills, their future employability, and their expectations about their own futures. They're overwhelmingly satisfied with their experience in the program. They want to participate again. So this is something rare for us as evaluators, that we evaluate a program that has this much good news. I mean, this just seems to be a lot of, a lot of good things happening in this program, both from the more subjective reports of the kids to the actual graduation numbers. We're seeing some really good things here. And we do a lot of this work and that's not necessarily typical for a program evaluation. So, did anyone have any questions? I'm not sure who.
Have you told the school district about this?
Yes.
Sure. My question as an educator is a program that meets four times a week for roughly seven weeks. So we're talking about twenty-eight days. The language that has been shared by the mayor, because it didn't say projected, is saying that it had an effect on the high school graduation rate. And so one of the questions that I started asking around is how, you know, how could these numbers be substantiated? And some of the feedback that I get is that it would be hard for it to be substantiated because of privacy, you know, because you can't get information. So, you know, when I, when I listen to your presentation out here, projected.
No, these were graduation rates that were shared with us by this, was it the school district?
Yes, we had access to the school database and had those graduation rates in there. So it was data from the school district, it wasn't what we were projecting.
These was individual, individual data.
Yeah.
And it's for that reason cannot be projected, it's like a specific data.
So, so just to piggyback, so you were able to take, you know, little Johnny that did the program and then look at little Johnny's weight and then look at little Johnny's graduation rate. So it was an actual?
Yes.
It's individual level data.
I just have to be, you know, that wasn't presented to me by the school district. That was, that was clearly not presented to me that you had access to Power School.
This, this was data that we had access through when we were part of evaluating the Albany Promise Initiative. We also were evaluating the school improvement grant that the city school district had as well and some of the component programs of that.
But I guess, you know, and like I'm aware that it is people that benefit from the program. It's people that, in fact, they were just registering at my school. The summer youth program has been a very valuable asset to our inner-city communities. Parents rely off of that opportunity. And, you know, one thing that I will say is that one of the positive things that I heard is that the kids are getting more money. But, you know, as an educator, you know, I was very interested in to hear how you came up with this. And like I said, you know, you know, I have, I'm an employee of the school district. So, you know, I have conversation. And so the way it was presented to me, it wasn't presented to me that you had access to our hard numbers and direct information. And that's why I said I'm listening to your presentation because I heard you say it was projections and, you know, you went by percentages.
It was not projections.
Well, I mean, I'm just listening, you know, with, with what I think I heard. And so, and my question is always, because a lot of times things are presented to our community as hardcore and a lot of times as projections. So what I was looking for really is that, because when you can prove something to me, you know, then I can let it go. And I still, you know, have some of the questions that I walked in here with. And so, you know, if, if, if it's a need for us to have another conversation so that I can get clarity and, you know, feel and understand where you're coming from, then I'll be open to that.
Is that correlation is not equal to causation. But what we are seeing is that at individual level data, as many control variables that we put there is stronger than relationship. And that means that the effect is higher. That means that whatever is happening in that six weeks, seven weeks, with whatever else is happening in the life of that youth during the year. Because you cannot put out that they, that is something happening during the year, but we are not measuring the rest of the year. We are measuring what happened in five weeks. And during that five weeks, what the data is saying is that there is a huge difference between those kids that participate that six weeks in a summer youth employment program and the kids that do not participate. Like, more than what the data is telling us, we cannot explain. What we can explain is what the youth are saying and what the numbers are saying when you compare the youth in the same district, the ones that participate and graduate versus the one that don't participate and graduate. And when you compare that to groups, there is a huge difference. That there could be other variables that could be in place, yes, but we don't have that variables. The variables that we have that we can control, race, ethnicity, neighborhood, like food, whatever we have to possibly put there, we use to possible decrease that because that is our job. We try to decrease that, that correlations all the time. And in this case, that didn't happen. And for that reason, it's that strong. Because seeing it from the perspective of individual level data at the level of the student and having that difference so, that is so big, is really important difference.
And, and, and thank you for that. But I'm also saying that they have Saturday academies going on at the school. They have a lot of things that are factoring into the graduation rate going up.
Of course, of course.
And so, you know, like, once again, the stuff that's being presented to our community, you know, we, you know, me sitting at the table, I want to make sure that that is done with fidelity and, you know, sometimes.
I believe us, we would love to have access to that data. We would love to have access to individual level data of the, of the city of Albany and individual level data of those activities that are getting on. Because that would allow us to measure where really the impact is going and where the really impact is coming. But at this moment, what we have is summer youth employment basically. And for that reason, it's the answer.
What percentage of people was that responded to your survey?
It was about, it was just shy of forty-five percent.
Forty-four percent.
Yeah, forty-four percent.
That's kind of, I guess, typical of teenagers that happens online. So you get a pretty good picture of those that are probably just a group.
However, I want to say that if I'm not, if I'm less likely to fill out a survey evaluating a program if I, you know, it's like, let me, let me get out. I don't want to spend any more time if I felt like something was like a waste of my time or I, or I don't have something positive to say, don't say anything at all kind of thing. And just, so I am a little bit nervous about.
Yeah, but there is something important to remember.
Yeah, I think some of the follow-up in terms of the forty-three percent response rate was this was the first time we did it and the distribution wasn't that great, to tell you the truth. So I don't know whether it was a skewed sample because those who didn't respond didn't want to or it was amended about what was distributed to the group.
So I would love, for, for, if you do future studies like this, for you to actually then do a sampling outreach to people who did not respond to the survey. Although, we're all, were you required to identify yourself when you fill out the survey?
No, but there is a difference in the two datas that are presented there. One was a data related to individual data base, individual level data that we have that summer youth employment give us their names, their information, and the individual level data to conclude based of the graduation rates. That is one part of the study. The other part of the study is the survey. And the survey make, ask questions about how was the program within that year. And one of the recommendations that we did to Summer Youth Employment Office was to increase the percent, the percentage ratio, how they collect the data of the summer, of, of that surveys before and after the, the summer to possible compare that data and to have more response.
So, so one point there, I'd say average response rate for a survey is thirty to forty percent. So I think you're pretty much in line with what you would have hoped for, right? You want more of that, that's the majority satisfaction rate, right? My other question, I think you hit it actually. You're also providing recommendations in addition to this evaluation, correct? So are you focusing on the, are you going to recommend that they focus on students with a lower GPA just given that that difference in graduation rate was so much higher within that population?
Yeah, we recommend, we, we make the recommendations in terms of the same things that you are seeing here of the threshold that impact more those kids with lower GPA and in communities that are like, like that, what we are called like the impoverished communities or the target zones. And we do, we make that recommendation. But additional to that recommendation, we make a recommendation on how they need to collect data, the process of surveying these participants. And we are requesting to the city of Albany access again to the individual level data because our interest is to have access to the data again to continue every year tracking these participants. Again, we, we have already individual level data and that we can merge if you were participating there, one year, two year, three year, four year, five years. And again, there is, there are things that we are not measuring, the school could say that. But what we are measuring is pretty strong.
Can I get, can we go back to the slide where you have the demographics? Yes, so I'm looking at, how do you?
Things like the second one.
Yeah, I'm looking at, because for me, this is, this is the most critical part. You're looking at thirteen thousand three hundred and eighteen students. Now, are those, where are you getting that number? You're getting that number from the school district?
That was from Power School. Those were records that we identified in Power School of kids in a, in the cohort that was entering their freshman year between two thousand eight and twenty eighteen. So that was like eleven year, eleven cohorts of kids.
Okay, and then the three thousand four hundred and sixty-seven are all those students who participated in the program that you had, you have records for, that you got from?
No, the thirty-five hundred, the three thousand five hundred and thirty-three were kids who participated and who did not participate but who were not still enrolled in the Albany School District. Because a lot of that thirteen thousand are still students and had not transferred out of the Albany School District because there's a lot of transfers out of the district. So a lot of those thirteen thousand kids, they never graduated from Albany, but nor did they drop out. They transferred to Gilderland or to a GED program or some other educational setting.
I guess my question is, the three thousand four hundred and sixty-seven, you got that from the city, right? Those are those who participated. And the thirteen thousand, yeah, that's what I'm looking at.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was on to the next slide with the number that we analyzed with the graduation rate.
Those are the people that you pulled records from the school district to come up with your other slide, figure two, that shows you the, the breakdown, I think it goes down one more. Oh, now one more. That, that's the key to me. That's the key. So the, the hard data is you took the actual thirteen thousand students in the school district and the thirty-four hundred that were part of the program and you compared it and you looked at their grades, you looked at their graduation. And that's the hard facts that you get.
Okay, yeah.
That's not, and that's not opinions, that's not the student's opinion. That's to the students, I mean, I care about their opinion, but.
You want the facts.
Yeah, I mean, you're telling me you have a hundred and, a hundred and thirty percent improvement of potential graduation for your lower tier students.
Right, well, again, it's an association because we can't prove that the program is what caused that difference. But we are saying that we did observe a difference of that magnitude.
Because correlation is not equal to causation.
No, but I'm just saying correlation and projection is the same thing.
Association is not a projection.
See, but that's why when it comes to numbers, you know, you, numbers could say two different stories. It depends on who's speaking about them. And so I don't want to mess up, you know, but like it's clearly, you know, not answered all my questions, so hopefully I can forget.
Yeah, can I just say one thing? Like, we never see these kind of findings. We were not paid for this study, we were just interested in doing it. And we, we are not an evaluation, we're an academic institution. We really stick by the numbers. We don't try to create like an overly optimistic view of social programs because that doesn't do anybody any good. And most of the programs that we evaluate, we don't have findings like this. So we take our job very seriously. We're not trying to overblow the program, we're not receiving money for the program. I mean, we worked with Paul and Jonathan, they're great guys, but we didn't do this to like inflate any findings. This is like true data from Power School.
But I'm just saying the way it's being presented, and you know, when it's presented in the mayor's budget and it's, and the state of the state, it should be, you should be able to prove it. It should be able to be, it shouldn't be any, I shouldn't walk out of here uncertain after meeting, after meeting with the people that did the actual study. So that's the part that is a little uncomfortable and then you look at only, it's less than. But I mean, it opens up the door to say the other fifty-three percent, what if their data, you know, was the opposite of?
No, no, this is the fifty, there were two different studies. One was the school district data and we had that data for the entire group who participated in the summer youth employment program. The second study was we gave out surveys and we asked them questions. And that was like what they felt they benefited from the program. So, yes, you're right, that maybe those who filled out that survey were the better students or... But the graduation rate data was the entire census of who participated in the program.
So, so my question about this is, I'm somebody cares very much about this program. I'm very positive on this program. I mean, sometimes kids don't necessarily have the best supervisor and they're allowed to slack. And I think the city has been doing things to try and discourage that kind of, or prevent that kind of experience of that they are learning some responsibility. I love the fact that there's these Friday enrichments, et cetera. However, I also think home life can have a significant impact. And I want to say, you know, so how do you control for the pushy parent who got those kids into this program? And so regardless of what their GPA might be or their disabilities, because you do have some children, you know, special needs, et cetera, how do you control for, and I've seen many parents, you know, having lived in Sheridan-Hall, seen many parents who are going to push their kids and make sure their kids are doing the right things and their kids are involved. And then I've seen parents who their kids don't show up to school half the time. So, so that, when you say that there's an associate, that there's a correlation that doesn't necessarily prove it, that, that is kind of the thing that, as I'm looking at these numbers that I question, I do wonder if you can ask kids who, you know, as part of this, who, how did you wind up in this program? And something about the characteristics of the people who might have pushed the students to do this or whether they were doing it on their own accord, et cetera, but, but.
But for the reason impoverished, some of the target zones are so important. Because what the research say is that targets, impoverished areas are correlated to more problems in house or more problems with not going to school or things like that. When we identify those areas that are the impoverished or the target zones.
The, the.
Emporaged, impoverished zones or target zones is because of that. It's because that areas in the contextual of the research have a hot, bigger definition.
Yeah, but I'm saying. Within those neighborhoods, the youth who participate in the family, lots of the parents were more, get more active and encouraged.
Right, regardless of what the net result is with regard to their, you know, the graduation rate or the actual success, the fact that they are there and they're, you know, a little bit more likely to push a kid into a program like this.
I mean, you're right.
They're being pushed at home too.
Yes, definitely a strong relationship between the value of education in the home and a kid's educational achievement. You're right.
But also registration, tonight's the first one. We have a good mixture, because you've been in some registrations. We have those parents who come with their children and do push. We have some kids come by themselves, include applications. So we work with them to have them come back to do applications so they can get that same job. So there's, there's a mixture, which is right for those pushy parents.
I was pushing my kids to go do it.
Yeah.
And it, and they had to figure that out. You know, what, what are the, you know, and, and that was their responsibility. So I wasn't necessarily showing up, but.
But could be a good question for this survey.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, how, you know, how, what made you decide to do this program? And give them, and not have it be, I don't like those surveys where they, you click one answer and you can't give one of the other reasons, that, you know, so there can be more than one reason.
One thing I think it would be good for, for someone who's looking at this, is to get the raw numbers and what is the percentage, what are the numbers of participants? So, you know, you have, you know, in below your twenty percent, is that when fifty students that participated? Or is that like half of your students were part of that population?
Each of these strata were twenty percent of the population. So twenty percent of the thirty-five hundred that we were looking at for graduation rates.
It ended up, you, you went mean twenty, twenty, twenty?
We, we divided it twenty, twenty, twenty. That's what these are based on. This is the lowest twenty percent of kids, and that's where we drew the cutoff.
How many kids are in that, in each section?
Oh, okay, I get what you're saying, yeah.
You know, do you have, out of your three, out of your three thousand four hundred kids, that's what the data is based out of?
Right.
Out of three thousand four, what is the number, you know, that are in those ranges? So, you know, you know, do we have, you know, do we have three thousand that are in the sixteen plus? Or do we have it, you know, the other way around? I think that helps, at least for me, you know, because it looks great. Oh, we got fifty, you know, twenty-two percent of our kids participate, get a better chance of graduating. But it's down to ten, fifteen kids versus, is that five hundred, six hundred?
Average is seventy-five, seventy-three.
Well, I mean, we had more data, more numbers.
So you can see.
See how, what's the.
Okay.
What, how many kids are between that?
How did you choose to be a minister of the survey? Was it a pen and paper survey or was it digital survey? And how many people were you?
Twenty-two, twenty-three questions.
Sorry for that. Okay. SIAP, we distributed, certainly worked with them to get distributed, and we can measure these. And did you account for none of this future explanation? The likelihood, the faces, the smiling face, a neutral face of the.
And what our recommendation is to have a digital survey, a pre-end poll this year, something that they can answer on tablets in the, the first day of like, what is it? The orientation, the orientation date, or that they have a link that they can access it from their phones and they can select languages.
We have an online survey, this was kind of, we have a, we have a, we have a.
This is, this is your policy change slide.
This is, this is the power change slide.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
So everybody asked a question.
I think he was confused about like what, I think he was confused about accuracy of like, should we be doing what it's saying? And I think, you know, for him, he does like, you know, word model, I think. And I think, is it really making that, that stuff doing, but. Some of the students would practice when he wanted that to be. I think he was like.
I remember, yeah. Look, yeah, to add this.
They had to.
Because we're the city.
It's like, it's like, heaven forbid, like, there's one thing. They were supposed to. Except when you asked.
Except, yes.
Come on, we have to see if we can be married. We have to fit two people that can be married.
Oh. I have gained. I've gained some weight, so I don't know.
I mean, I don't think you can.